Greetings. Thanks for joining tonight. I will call us to order. This is our regular city council meeting, Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P. M. We do have a quorum, so I'll call us to order. Our first item will be our invocation, and then we'll do the pledges, and then get into our agenda. If you'll stand with me, please. Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to gather as the city of Jacksonville, and as our leaders of our town that do the work for our city. We just thank you for the blessings that you've given our city all these years, and your watch care over our emergency service providers. We just pray that everything that we do tonight, and all the decisions that we make as a council, would benefit the entire city as a whole. We just thank you for all the blessings and the wonderful things that you do for each of us every day, in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Join us with the pledge. First, to the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our first item is a special presentation to be brought by the Jetco President Shane Pace, the Employee of the Month. So, Mr. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This month, we are continuing the trend of local entrepreneurs. So, this week, or this month, I have Logan Russell with Jacksonville Custom and Dusters. So, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and come on up here. This is a little bit unusual. Logan was nominated, and Jacksonville Custom and Dusters was nominated as a Business of the Month. And generally, we have had some sort of interaction with the business over the course of a month, the past couple of months, leading up to this. But this is one where we received an email and just said, you know, "I really want to recognize all the hard work that these guys are doing." And Logan, as a business owner and a leader to his organization, I think he's grown up to twelve employees now, and four trucks. And what they talked about is the way that he leads his guys, and the loyalty that you get in return for that. So, I think that's what we try to do here in the city of Jacksonville, and I think that's a true testament to what we would like to see here in Jacksonville from our business owners. So, I want to say thank you. I hope business is going really well with all of the rain.
Yes, sir.
Was there anything you could say there?
Uh, thank y'all. I'm super, I'm terrible at public speaking. I'm super nervous. So, thank y'all, though. Really, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Logan.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Our next is our presentation of our racial profiling report by Police Chief Joe Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Texas Code of Criminal Procedure requires that law enforcement agencies that conduct traffic stops report the number of contacts and the racial and ethnic background of those drivers stopped. On January second, two thousand and twenty-four, I submitted an open records request with the Texas Department of Public Safety for racial and ethnic breakdown of all persons with a Texas driver's license with the zip code of seven-five-seven-six-six. I utilized the data provided by DPS to compare the number of stops on white drivers compared to other races or ethnicities. The comparative data I'm using is, there are thirty-two thousand five hundred and two persons with driver's licenses with our zip code. Males comprise fifty-two percent, females forty-eight percent. White drivers of those licensees are seventy-seven percent, black drivers fifteen, and Hispanic drivers fifteen percent. The Jacksonville Police Department conducted six thousand five hundred and forty-seven stops in two thousand and twenty-three. I compared those, the data from those traffic stops to our driver's license data to see if any bias exists. White drivers were stopped almost sixty percent of the time, black drivers were stopped seventeen and a half percent, and Hispanic drivers twenty-one percent. These statistics were recorded to T. Cole as required and made available to public, to the public on our website. The Jacksonville Police Department is an accredited police department by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. Many of the standards the department meant to achieve the accreditation status are centered around policies and practices to ensure and prevent bias-based policing. All employees are aware of the policies and practices, and receive training throughout the year regarding bias-based policing. I've studied the data very extensively, and do not believe the department to be engaged in any type of bias-based policing practices. In two thousand and twenty-three, we did not receive any complaints alleging bias following a traffic stop. If you have any questions on the report that I've submitted to T. Cole or on our website, I'll answer any in the chat.
Sounds good.
There are zero complaints. There's a lot.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet. Our next item is a presentation of the first place National Night Out Award for the Police Department.
I've seen plaques. I've never seen a trophy.
Do you have to buy furniture now because of that?
That's right. That's right. I was looking to see maybe there was some M. and Ms. or something in there. But you know, these guys, y'all did a great job years ago, and won third, fifth. And they told us and the whole city, their desire was to knock it out of the park and win first place nationally, and they did. And I hope you got to experience that this year. So, I will present the cup to Mr. Mayor and the police for a job well done. It was a great event. There were hundreds of thousands of pictures.
There were a lot.
The last test I heard was what? What else? Like eight, seven, eight thousand, nine thousand? You have to get a big trophy case. Couldn't make a champagne bucket. The job well done. And it was a great event. A lot of fun. It's super deal.
Now it is.
Our next item is citizens' participation, which is where the council sets aside the time to listen to concern citizens. It's not a time where we can actually have a dialogue or answering questions, but we want to hear a concern. We'll make note of that, and then follow up at a later date on that. We have three that are signed up tonight, and I will just call them by order. When you come, if you'll limit your comments to three minutes, and I'll give us a timer, but I know you'll come in under the three minutes. The first one is Michael Moore. So, if you'll come, and if...
Okay, okay. So, we'll defer to Jamie. Jamie Moore. Yeah. If you'll give your, state your name for the record, your address, and then give us three minutes of goodness. Okay, great. My name is Jamie Moore. I live at one-two-two-four County Road thirty-one-eleven, which is one of the reasons I'm here to discuss. Before I even start anything, I do want to apologize. What I'm about to discuss with you, we had a report with KETK that happened last weekend. It was on the news, and it was in the newspaper. The only reason it got to them first is because they reached out to us first before we were able to actually get on here and speak with you guys. So, I do apologize for not coming to you first. I am the daughter of Patty and Henry Cole. They live below Buckner Dam, and they live in between Gum Creek and the Natures River Basin, where the spillway is. In two thousand and twenty-two, my husband and I, Mike, we purchased the property adjacent to my parents. It's across the creek, so we're on the side of the Natures River, or the Natures Basin. And we, being there all the time, we really started noticing the erosion. Now, I was moved down here at the age of five, so I have been noticing the change of the spillway since that time. And my father, Henry Cole, he has come to the city, to the city council several times, and has discussed the matter of erosion due to all the rain, of course, and from the dam. There has been things that has, the city council and the city has done for us. They have laid out concrete before. Of course, they got us a beautiful fence to be protect from the outside, people coming in there and throwing trash, and falling in the creek, intoxicated, and so forth. So, that has been something. But since the two thousand and twenty-two, we have really noticed incredible amounts of erosion. The embankments have, to my parents' knowledge, the embankments on either side, since they have lived there, have probably around, she, my mother said, about ten feet on each side that they have lost for the embankment. And so, if you aren't knowledgeable in dams, I've been researching it myself, trying to figure out what's going on with it. Buckner Dam is called a homogeneous earth dam, which means it was made out of one soil. It also has the tendency to allow seepage in, which causes a lot of erosion. And that is exactly what is happening. Let's see where I'm at.
You've got one minute left.
Okay, sorry. Anyways, what I would really like to do is come back with you, to you guys, talk about this in discussion and furtherness, and be put on the docket for next month, if that is possible. And do you guys have PowerPoint that I could use if I need so? Yes?
Yeah, you can submit pictures to us on paper. That'd be fine.
Okay, do it that way. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Michael, any more comments?
She pretty much said it all.
Okay.
But basically, what I had to say was, the wildlife there has been greatly affected. We have bob white quail, blue crane, and of course, the bald eagle that's up there. Quit hunting down there, I guess, because we've lost most of the trees, and so it has nowhere to, you know, perch. And then, on the other side of County Road thirty-one-eleven, in two thousand and six, there was an inspection, and he said it was significant erosion, but it wasn't concerning at the time. And that was two thousand and six, so here now. I measured it. It's about two and a half. You're pushing three feet before the road starts actually, you know, caving in. So, that's the main artery to Pierce's Chapel. So, it would be significant if someone, I don't know, just come take a look and see.
Yeah, we got our, yeah, we got contact information.
Okay. And like my wife said, we had some, if you would like to see some actual film footage, it's on the KETK website of the actual spillway and on the other side of thirty-one-eleven. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Our next is Mike McEwen. If you'll come, state your name and address.
Mike McEwen, sixteen-twenty-four County Road thirty-two-eleven. As you know, there's been a lot of debate about how to name the golf course, because a lot of people wanted it to be named Jacksonville. And it turned out to be named Jackson. And because it has been changed to the name Jackson, I've got a crew who's going out to all the Jacksonville signs at the outsides of the city, and they're going to put green paint over the V.I.L.L.E.
Thank you.
Oh, I won't call him what he calls me.
You still have two minutes and thirty seconds, Mike?
Yeah, you've got two more minutes. You've got anything else?
Stand up.
Comedy hour.
Yeah, we appreciate it. So, that can, anybody else wanted to speak and just didn't fill out a form? We're still there. Okay. Thank you very much for your input. Item number seven is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding an application for a zone change request from B. one-and-two family to C. multifamily low density on four-point-zero-three acres Lot Two Waldrop S.D. subdivision, on the south side of the East Russ Street and adjoining seventeen forty-one East Russ Street on the east side, property ID one-four-four-five. We want to, Mr. James?
Yes, Mayor. We will open the public hearing in a moment, but I'll give a quick staff briefing on the property. You see the location map on the screen. This property lies on what I would consider as East Seventy-nine, kind of east of Phillips Street and the Ford House there. It would be considered probably a flag lot of approximately four acres. It has about fifty feet, or right at fifty feet of frontage on Highway Seventy-nine, and then, as it, as you work your way south, it works itself into about a hundred and fifty-foot property width, again, at just over four acres. Applicant is requesting to go from one-and-two family, which would be considered like our single-family or duplex zoning, to the C. multifamily low density, which allows up to ten living units per acre, and up to two and a half stories or thirty-five feet of total structure height. You see the purpose listed there on the slide of the C. multifamily low-density zoning district. There were no people in opposition, no participants in opposition to the rezoning request. At the Planning and Zoning Commission on February sixth, we did have one of the five members absent, but the other four voted to approve. The request is made, C. low-density. You kind of see the surrounding zoning districts there, and the request, along with the table on the right showing, where that kind of falls in in terms of...
What is the Gardendale?
Gardendale is on...
Probably B.
It's actually the A there, behind the G, I think, just south of the G. Or, excuse me, excuse me, it's the B.
It's the big Gardendale's that big.
Well, there's a lot of Bs up there, but yes, to the east of the J.
Okay.
And D is Bill McCreary Ford?
No, probably M.
Okay.
Well, that's Barry Lane right there, and that's right there beside the Ford dealership.
Yeah, he's the yellow there.
Yeah, he is the yellow. Okay. Okay. All right. So, we'll open up a public hearing to receive input publicly. If you are far against, this is your time to come to the podium and speak. Okay. Hearing neither, we will close that portion of the public hearing. So, item B is to discuss and consider with possible action and ordinance granting that requested zone change. I'll entertain a motion, and then we can discuss.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept or approve the ordinance granting the requested zone change.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace, second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion we need to have on that? Set back up into your neighborhood?
It backs up to residential lots that front O'Keefe.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a creek cutting there. If you see that G parcel to the west of the identified or the subject property, that's a creek line that continues to meander to the southeast and bisects that property just south of the D delta to the west of it. It would probably be fairly difficult to develop south of the creek, but the applicant and the property owner would have the ability to do that should they so choose.
Any other discussion?
So, there could be up to forty units on that side, correct?
That's correct.
And we don't have any information on what that might look like further?
I think the applicant intends to build some duplexes, but I just want to caution everybody that this is, he'll have entitlements to build up to forty-eight, forty units. They're not locked into any kind of site plan.
And right now, they're, you're saying it's one-and-two family units, or it's currently zoned for one-and-two family?
That's correct, Councilwoman. It's B. one-and-two family currently.
But the C is still, no light manufacturing or anything. It's still residential.
Residential.
That's correct.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
If there's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. About one opposition. Four to one. Okay. Item number eight is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding an application for a requested zone change from B. one-and-two family, K. industrial, M. heavy manufacturing, and O. agricultural to M. heavy manufacturing located on a tract described as a forty-four block, thirty-two-seventy tract, Quovado, approximately eighty acres located between the west end of Woodlawn Avenue and east of the eight-hundred block of Panita Street, and south of the Willis Street, property ID one-oh-seven-six-six-three-zero-zero-zero, and nine-eight-five-nine-five-oh-four-zero-one.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, this one's a little unique in the sense that it was four different zoning classifications, and we'll take a look at the zoning map here in a moment, looking to consolidate into one of the four, which would be M. heavy manufacturing. This is one that I think has, you know, gleaned some attention throughout town because it's been, you know, it was originally applied for in November. They did come before, this request did come before the Planning and Zoning Commission in November. They tabled it at the request of additional information from the applicant at the time. We held a meeting in December, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that is, just based on workload, applications pending, and then also, we had not received any additional information from the applicant at that time. Our January meeting was canceled due to the ice storm, and so it came before planning and zoning on February sixth. The applicant is requesting straight zoning, M. heavy manufacturing, taken straight from our zoning code of ordinances there. You see the permitted uses in M. heavy manufacturing. That's not all of them, but as our zoning ordinance is laid out, we basically have a structure in which each zoning district builds on itself, but these are just the permitted uses in heavy manufacturing. But anything in a lesser commercial zoning district, L, K, J, H, G, F, as you work your way up, would also be allowed. The reason the applicant requested M. heavy manufacturing, as you see highlighted on the screen, is because it allows for an electric power plant, which a solar farm was intended use for the applicant's discussions with staff and some presentations at Planning and Zoning, and that would fall under electric power plant. The request came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on February sixth. It was their motion, which was unanimously approved, albeit we did have one Planning and Zoning Commission member absent, was to deny with prejudice on a four-oh vote. And you see there the zoning map, which kind of shows you the four different zoning classifications. I think one of the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission, just looking through the minutes and some of the dialogue, we did have a couple citizens in opposition to it present, but is that list of permitted uses with the adjacency to West Side Elementary School and some of the residential uses, I think was of great concern.
And just because they say that's their intent, that doesn't mean they want to do...
Thank you for clarifying. They can tell us they're going to do anything, but once you get straight zoning, you have your entitlements, and somebody, they can sell the land, sublease it, do whatever, and you could get any, anything on that list.
So, their recommendation was to deny it?
That's correct. And I do, I apologize. I did forget. This morning, yesterday morning, I will say that a representative for the applicant did indicate that they no longer choose or desire to pursue the construction of a solar farm, but that their buyer was still going to purchase the property, and they did ask the council to consider not acting on this tonight. However, it would be my recommendation that council act on this item this evening.
All right. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the request for the zone change.
With, okay.
Which?
With prejudice?
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim McCreary, and a second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion?
One thing is, if they wanted a solar farm there, what is the lightest zoning you can use to...
That one right there.
So, the lightest zoning for the solar farm would be M. heavy manufacturing. There are other avenues, like a planned development or something, they could pursue. Again, it would have to go through the whole process with planning and zoning in the city council.
There's too many other things that could be used for it.
James, I don't know if now is the right time to ask this question, but it's on my mind, so I'm just going to go ahead and ask it, and if it's not, then just tell me. But one of the things that concerns me when we're talking about planning and zoning and looking at changing, you know, zoning requests, is the notion that someone could say, "This is what I want to do," but then, in their due diligence, or just in an effort to kind of manipulate the system, they could change their minds about that.
Sure.
How do we prevent that from being the case? Is that a policy change that we need to look at?
I really probably want to lean on some discussions with Brett, but this, there's always straight zoning, and then there's like planned development. So, you can't make everything a planned development. So, you have to allow for some form of straight zoning. We've provided some training to the Planning and Zoning Commission to that effect, because it's frequently that somebody will pursue interest in a property, have it rezoned, and then funding falls through, or their desire changes, or they find a more ripe piece of property in another town. Then they sell it, and if that zoning is in place to allow the buyer, you know, to do what they want to do, they can. And we have to be very careful of personal property rights and those things as well.
Sure, sure.
And I'll be glad to talk to you outside the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion to second. All in favor to deny with prejudice, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is to a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding an application for a zone change request from A. single-family to C. multifamily low-density located at five-oh-two-A, five-oh-two-B, and five-oh-four Nature Street, property ID two-two-two-one-five-one-zero-zero-zero.
We did open a public hearing on that last one, correct?
Did we open a public?
No, we didn't. Sorry, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to open a, back up a public hearing regarding the solar farm. Does anybody want to come? And I'll open it. If we're far against now is the time, public hearing?
You just need to take into consideration the fact there are lots of residences all around that property.
Right.
And that putting in a manufacturing facility could potentially have a very negative impact on the value of the residences in that area.
Right, okay. Would you like to speak? Sure.
There is no thoroughfare where any large trucks can get in to that specific area.
Yeah.
I drove the west side of the property last week, and there's actually no trucks allowed on the street to access from the west side. From the east side, not only do you have the school, and that's been mentioned, but also you have, really, with the swales and all of the roads going to that, there's no way you're going to get any kind of land clearing equipment. And if, for some reason, they do get anything in there, you know, you're not going to have a path of trucks to supply any kind of manufacturing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And one last thing. Is there any way, and this would have to be done later on, is to rezone that so that there's not any kind of heavy manufact, there's no, no way to get heavy manufacturing into that area, to rezone that to something more appropriate?
Anyone else? Okay. I'll close our public hearing. Legal, do we, we have to vote again or no? After the, we're good?
You've already voted.
We have voted. Okay. My bad. Pardon me. I got excited about...
You're prejudiced.
All right, now, now we go to item number nine. I think I've already read this one. Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, so we want to open up.
Was there any discussion before?
Would you like the staff presentation?
Yeah, please, please.
I'm happy not to give you.
No, no, I won't.
Mayor, Council, third and final rezoning request for your consideration this evening. It's our smallest subject property of just under, or just over, if you will, three tenths of an acre, lies at the southwest corner, southeast corner, rather, of the intersection of Dallas Street and Natures Street. There is currently a kind of a duplex-style structure potentially on it with like an oversized, somewhat shed. The applicant was originally, per their application, looking to go from A. single-family to C. multifamily low-density, which is similar to what we just looked at a couple items ago. However, they verbally and in writing requested, and I believe they had representation at the meeting, requested that the property be downzoned. They still do want to, excuse me, they still want to zone it from A. to a multifamily or a one-and-two family classification, but as it was posted and published in the newspaper, they're going to downzone it, or requesting council approval to downzone from what was noticed, C. multifamily density to B. one-and-two family, which is kind of like our duplex zoning. My understanding is that they intend to replat the lot into two lots and build two duplexes there after the removal of the existing structures. Again, there's no guarantee that happens. This is just a straight zoning request.
But it still has to be family, a thousand, that's all you can make of it?
Yes, it would need to be a residential use. You see kind of the, it's, I would consider it kind of a transitional area. These property or this property lies just east of kind of like Chick-fil-A and Starbucks and those things, as you get into some of our legacy and historical neighborhoods there. Just to the north of it and across Dallas Street, I believe, is the former location of the Breaking Bread, so some people may be familiar with that.
Old building.
Okay.
Is that what this is?
What, what building?
Dr. Hobus's old clinic.
No, it's not.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. I'll look it up.
It's a public hearing. Girls, pick up.
Well, we had no... So, we'll open up a hearing, public hearing. If you want to speak in favor of or against, it's now's your time.
Oh, I just have a question, but you don't answer it.
Would you take the podium and give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, that way we can, we can hear you.
We have to keep minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. Regina Brooks, five-oh-one Looney Street, Jacksonville, Texas.
Thank you.
Um, I just, I looked it up when it came up to the only agenda. Um, I just, I looked it up when it came up to the only agenda, and that's a familiar house to me because I pass it all the time. It sits there on the corner, kind of right behind where the library used to be.
Yeah.
And there used to be some, some old black gentleman sitting on the porch all the time. Do you know what I'm talking about?
That is exactly that house. Has the little garage apartment.
Has the garage apartment in the back.
Right.
So is he planning on tearing those structures down?
That's my understanding, that that's the applicant's desire. Again, there's no guarantee that happens. I just want to stress that it's straight zoning. They could retrofit the, they could remodel and, and sell it as is. And I was speaking to this, the property to the north being the location of the former Breaking Bread.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Four twenty is the property across the street, four twenty Dallas Street.
One other question about this is, tell me again what, how big that acreage is?
Point three five, a little small for-
For a duplex, but okay.
About a third of an acre.
Couple of duplexes. That's all, just trying to get some clarification. Thank you.
Like you were down. Anybody else would like to speak?
Well, it's currently A, single family, so they're going to B.
You'll come and give us your name and, yeah.
Stacy Williams.
Address?
Five five zero San Antonio Street.
Thank you.
I'm representing the buyer on it, and they do plan to tear it down and do new builds there. And the intention was originally to check in to see if we could rehab it. It's just in such bad shape, and it's, um, it just needs to be taken care of. So their plan is to make it better and rent them out, so, new builds. And it'll be zoned and rezoned if they could do multiple lots, but if not, it'll just be the duplex.
Thank you. Anybody else? Amanda?
Just checking, just checking. She's still got her cup, she's a-
Okay, well, we'll close that portion of the public hearing.
So can I ask a question, or do I need to wait until discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, yeah. So, uh, our item B is to discuss and consider with possible acts of ordinance granting that requested zone change. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the zone change.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Can we clarify which zone change?
Back up.
Right there, that's the one. B, one and two family.
One, two family.
Okay, and I'll second that. And we've got a second by Mayor Pro Tim, Tim McRae now. Any discussion or questions?
Okay, that, yeah, so that was my confusion, because I thought I kept hearing that they were downgrading and going from A, one house- to C, which would be up to ten units per acre.
Right.
But they're actually going to B.
B.
Okay.
Correct.
One to two family.
So you could, yeah, if somebody requests in writing a more intense, uh, zoning district or classification, if you will, and then we get to the public hearing, and they're either willing to accept less or the council wants to offer less, which has been done in the past, uh, that's acceptable per the public notices that were put out. However, if they requested C zoning, we could not offer D just at the dais, like on a whim, like, hey, you got D now. Because of public notices in the public hearing process would need to be restarted.
Any other discussion?
Are you cleaning up the neighborhoods?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number ten is our consent agenda. If you'll see, we have items A through H. We're going to pull out F, and we'll consider it next after our consent agenda. But A through F, excluding F, A through H excluding F is just, uh, minutes and just regular things like, uh, closure of streets, Comatia Fest, flaming J, one tax refund, and they're requesting. So I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda without regards to F.
Mayor, no, you're fine, go ahead.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, removing item F.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallo.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, uh, Latitia Horace. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So now we'll insert item number F is to approve a District Two appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board to fill a vacancy. I think that was Councilwoman Mindy Gallo's appointment.
That is me. That is me. Um, it is my honor, actually, um, to, to actually make a motion to, um, appoint Jeff Pelletier, who's right there, um, to the Parks and Recreation Board, um, to fill the vacancy for District Two.
We have a motion by Councilwoman, uh, Mindy Gallo.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim, Tim McRae. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eleven is, uh, action out of executive session if necessary, and I do believe we have one, so.
Yes, um, Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to do all things necessary to enter into a temporary utility easement and a permanent utility easement across approximately forty seven point five eight acres of land owned by William Paul Kelly and Patricia Kelly, located near the corner of Tina and Medifex Streets, including but not limited to the execution of closing and ancillary documents, and all to be on such terms and conditions as he may see proper and fit.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman, uh, Mindy Gallo.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twelve is to, uh, hear a quarterly financial report presented by Finance Director Roxana Brower.
Short and sweet, girl.
Got so much to cover, I'm going to talk fast.
Okay.
So interrupt me if you have a question, I don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, so December thirty first marks the end of the first quarter of the new fiscal year. So our percentage to compare to is twenty five percent. Combined revenues are at seven point eight million, which is in line with budgeted expectations at just over twenty five percent of the annual budgeted amount. Uh, revenues are decreased about four hundred and eleven thousand or five percent from last fiscal year. Notable decreases include sales tax, grant revenue, interfund transfers, and sale of capital property. Taxes, property tax collec- collections are ahead of budgeted projections like they always are at this time of the year, and they're basically flat with last fiscal year, and that's just due to the timing of tax receipts. Sales tax collections are lagging behind, about a hundred and twenty six thousand below budgeted expectations. Uh, we've been behind for the last five months in a row. Um, so we got to watch that and potentially, uh, make a plan to see how we're going to address that. Hotel motel tax collections are ahead at thirty one percent selected, and they're increased about forty four thousand over last fiscal year. Twenty six thousand of that increase is for the, the venue, the new venue tax that we added in February. Fees and charges for services, other big, uh, revenue stream. Water sales, it's the largest budgeted, uh, revenue in that category. We're at eight hundred and eighty two thousand now, which is about a hundred and twenty five thousand less than our projection. Our projection is just the average of all twelve months. The first quarter is, never looks like the fourth quarter because of the weather. Use more water when it's hot outside. And we're down about one percent compared to last fiscal year. Uh, we did have rate changes, and they are going out in the bills that are being sent right now. So the rate changes are going to help us get up to the, to budget. Sewer sales of six hundred and ninety six thousand are a hundred and twenty six thousand less than the monthly projections, similar to the water. Uh, but billing for sewer is up about twenty eight percent or a hundred and fifty three thousand over last year. You know, when we made rate changes, a lot of the changes were for the sewer side as opposed to the water because the sewer was the, the side that really needed the investments. Uh, sanitation sales, twenty five percent. How perfect is that? Forty thousand ahead of prior year.
I love that.
Ambulance fees, they are up. This is better than, uh, the last time we were this good is about four years ago. So we're seventy four thousand ahead of last fiscal year, and that's going to help us, um, mitigate that sales tax deficiency. Transfers in look a little bit weird, below twenty five percent. It's because of that strange thing that I talked about the last, um, quarterly report of the transfer between the Court Technology Fund and the General Fund. Franchise fees, uh, we're totaling three hundred and forty eight thousand. We're about six thousand greater than projected, but we're decreased about four thousand from last year. So it really is pretty much flat and right on. Investment income still tracking ahead, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We're in, increased a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars over last year. That's also something that can help us with the, with the areas that we're lagging behind in. Intergovernmental revenue, it looks small right now, and it's because that's a lot of, uh, grant revenue. Two point one million of it is ARPA revenue. While we already have the ARPA revenue, we don't get to recognize it as revenue until we spend and we do the projects. Miss Langius receipts significantly ahead of budgeted projections related to sell, uh, uh, capital property that we didn't budget for. I believe there were a couple of lake properties and then also the Rose Garden. Funds and forfeiture, forfeiture, a hundred and thirty five thousand, ended in line with projections, and were increased forty two thousand over last year. Lasting some permits is just lagging a little bit behind budgeted projections at this time.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to ask you about the sales tax. I know you're not our, you know, local economist necessarily, but I know you mentioned that we've been lagging behind for about five months or so. Do we have any indication? I mean, are folks, are they just kind of tightening their, their belts during, after the holidays or just before the holidays? Do we, have we had a spike in unemployment? Any ideas kind of what's going on there?
It's cooling across the state.
Okay.
Um, COVID.
Okay.
Brought some artificial receipts, in my opinion, um-
Just with all the money flowing into the economy from stimulus checks and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're cooling down after that and returning back to a more normal stream.
October thirty first, I don't know what the heck happened October thirty first.
Halloween.
But, um, well, yeah, yeah, but the weekend after Halloween, I mean, my restaurant, not so much the catering business, my restaurant, I mean, we saw about a twenty five percent total drop in sales in that restaurant.
Really?
And it is just now-
Starting to pick up?
Starting to pick up. We're almost, we're back to where we need to be, just starting in the past two weeks.
Interesting.
Ev- every restaurant went through this.
Interesting, okay.
And that started at the end of October. I don't know what happened that first weekend in November, but that's the craziest fall I've ever had.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, most bizarre. None, none of us can explain it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now four more hours.
For some reason, uh, notes on this one do not look like they printed out. Should probably check that. Um, anyway, it's the same thing, it's revenue, except we're looking at it by funds now instead of by, uh, revenue type. You can see, General Fund, we're ahead of the twenty five percent because we received a lot of the property tax collections during the first quarter. Same thing with debt service. Capital projects has a lot of like that ARPA funding in there, so we won't see that revenue till we do those projects. Uh, the VERF, um, I love saying that. We've only had one expense out of there so far, leave, uh, Streets or Parks Department got a piece of equipment, um-
Do we fund that monthly, or is it a annual transfer?
Um, we ceded the funds by a large transfer from the General Fund. And so what we're looking to do is at the end of each fiscal year, for now-
Okay.
Make what transfers we can, but we do need to get on a regular schedule of monthly transfers once we figure out more about the fund.
Yeah, work can get forward, sure.
Yes. Grant fund, uh, kind of the same story. You don't really see the grant revenue until you do the projects. The tourism special revenue, I can buy, combine the hotel motel along with the, um, venue project fund, and they're trucking just right above the twenty five percent. Court special revenue, it's that weird transfer. That's going to get better after this year because this year in May will be the last payment on the capital lease for the financial software. Police special revenue, it's not budgeted, it's just shown for history or memorial. It just gets a little bit of interest income. Our utility fund, we talked about the water sales, the sewer sales, that's what's got that, uh, below the twenty five percent. And then our beautification fund is just tracking right there, close to the twenty five percent. So we're looking really good on revenue, um, through the first quarter. Hopefully my expenses, uh, the combined expenditures are five point six million and are less than the revenue receipt. So that's good, and we're below budgeted expectations at thirteen point one percent. And we are decreased about four hundred and sixty nine thousand or seven point six percent from last fiscal year. The notable decreases include repair and maintenance, water and wastewater, and streets, sidewalks, culverts, bridges, and interfund transfers. Overall, the low percent to budget is related to budgeting the bond-funded projects, the Streets projects, the wastewater project, and also the Civic Center project. We budget those at a hundred percent, and, you know, sometimes they could take years. So we've been budgeting that, uh, lake project at one point five million for-
Five years?
At least three years for sure, maybe more. And those projects account for ten point eight million dollars of the budget. Employee services expenses at two point four million are at twenty percent, and they're increased about a hundred and thirty three thousand over last year. And that's because, uh, we gave the three percent cost of living adjustment. We added some employees, and then our public safety employees get their step increases, um, for tenure. Services expenses at one million are in line with budgeted expectations at just above twenty five percent. Were increased a hundred and forty five thousand over last year. Engineering expenses for the street projects are the primary driver of the increase. Transfers out, much like the transfers in, are slightly, slightly below the twenty five percent related to that strange General Fund and Court Technology Fund transfer. Maintenance expenses only at three point eight percent. That is, um, looks strange because of the ten million dollars for the Streets project and the wastewater projects that are budgeted there. Capital expenditures represent seven point one percent of budgeted expectations. Timing and capital expenditures are often unpredictable due to lead times on ordering vehicles, machinery, equipment, especially right now, and then also availability of contractors. Or when your grant gets approved, there's just so many factors of when we can do our capital projects or, or buy our capital, um, equipment vehicles. Supplies expenditures at two hundred and ten thousand are below budgeted expectations at fifteen percent and are thirty four thousand less than prior year. Utilities expenses, we didn't do that bad of a job at budgeting it, that it's only like twelve percent. It's because utility expenses are billed after. So most of the expense, uh, bills that we get during the first quarter are actually for last fiscal year. So we just haven't caught up yet. Debt service, I just got through paying three million dollars today, I think. No, not three million, because we don't have that much budget. A whole lot of money, um, for our debt service that's due in February and August each year. So about half of it, it'll be at fifty percent the next quarter and then a hundred percent at the fourth quarter. Travel and education expenditures at twenty three percent expended are right in line with budgeted expectations, and were increased about twenty thousand over prior year. Finally, after COVID, people are starting to open up the classes and being able to go and travel and go to conferences and things again. Okay, same with revenue. We did the categories. Now here are the funds. Whoop, there's a different idea. Okay, so everybody except the beautification fund is below the twenty five percent. Well below. Part of it is because, like I said, with the utilities, a lot of bills we get are for last fiscal year. And you'll get to hear how last fiscal year turned out at the next council meeting because our audit will be presented at the next council meeting. Beautification fund, they have a pot of money and, and they, they can spend whatever money that they have. We just put a budget there, so that being at thirty one percent, doesn't really matter. If, if they have money there, they can spend it. Oh, fund balance, so you see that we began the year with about twenty three million, and through the first quarter, we increased just over two million dollars. And then the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Utility Funds all have a target fund balance. And you can see at each of those that the target balance is being exceeded. And then the last slide is our cash investments. Uh, we increased about five hundred and sixty nine thousand over last quarter. And the primary driver of that is our, um, property tax collections. You can see the distribution of the funds is basically the same. And that is, that is my first quarter financial report. Does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to talk about?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roxana. Welcome.
Can we get, dig into those sales tax numbers a little, I mean?
I just, I just noted that, uh, Councilman, I think we'll probably do some kind of update at your March, March workshop.
I'm not, this is-
We, we just subscribe to a service that helps us kind of categorize and analyze.
Yeah, yeah.
There's certain information that's, um, protected and we're not able to share.
Yeah.
But there's, uh, other metrics and consolidation that we can do to share that information.
I just think that that, I don't know. I'd like to see what everybody, I'd like to not see what everybody else did, but I'd like to understand better what just happened.
Ten minutes is ten minutes.
Okay, okay.
We've been on a growth for, for too long to have that happen.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to jump down to fifteen, uh, to discuss and consider with possible action approving the street closure for a car show and swap show Saturday, April twentieth from eight AM to five PM.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. I think I see the applicant in the audience. He probably wants to go- I think I see the applicant in the audience, he probably wants to go home and generate some sales tax on the way home, stop at Chick-fil-A or something. So Mayor, Council, the reason this one isn't on consent, because this would be kind of a relatively new event. The other street closures that were on consent have a pattern of being closed, generally those times, dates, and durations. This requestor is Mr. Jonathan Gary. He's the president of nine oh three Street Cars and Classics. I think they've done several events, maybe in partnership potentially with Commerce Street Drafthouse. But as depicted on the screen, they're requesting a street closure on Saturday, April twentieth, generally the whole day from eight to five, spanning between Ragsdale and Naches, and then it's kinda transparent somewhat there, but under the overpass. Just make it abundantly clear, we're not talking about the overpass itself, but just underneath the overpass. So it'd be kind of a classic car show, custom car show, along with a swap meet, which is where they, you know, buy and sell parts among the enthusiasts and the participants.
Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion for that street.
I'll make a motion that we approve the closure of the street.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
For the car show and swap shop Saturday, April twentieth.
All right. Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallo, any discussion?
Is this gonna be the first time we're hosting this event?
It'd be my third annual, but I, the last two I've had it off road.
Okay.
Started out, drove there, first show, I had fifty cars, next show I had about seventy-five.
Great.
Is there gonna be an entry fee?
Yes.
Is it, is it, is it sales taxable?
Yeah, probably not. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you for hanging out with us, appreciate it. Now we'll go back to thirteen.
Thank you.
Consider and, discussing, consider with possible action to resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Public Safety Office, to the Office of the Governor, pardon me there, for twenty ballistic shields.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we're always chasing grants, this is one that Chief Williams and his crew is pursuing. This is a grant offered by the governor of the state of Texas. It is in response to the unfortunate and tragic events in Uvalde. These shields would come to the city if we're awarded free of charge, estimated value of just under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These are rated to essentially stop small arms fire up to about a thirty caliber rifle, so. Something that you need to make entry into barricaded subject or something like that.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion in that, a resolution authorizing that grant application.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the submission of an application to the Public Safety Office, to the Office of the Governor for twenty ballistic shields.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Letitia Horace, any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries.
I'm sorry, I'm so slow with my question, can I still ask a question?
Ask a question.
I, I just wanted to know, are we able, if we don't get the grant, would we still be able to purchase the shields?
I think we could purchase maybe one or two, certainly not twenty, without, you know, consideration as part of the upcoming budget. I think they're, well, we could do the math, they're not, they're not cheap.
Yeah.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't able to see your pricing, I could just see public, public pricing's like fourteen thousand dollars on one of those.
If they stop a bullet, they're priceless.
Yeah. Okay. We hope we get the grant.
Yeah.
Item number fourteen, discuss and consider with possible action the purchase of a Vector combination sewer jet and vacuum truck.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, I'm gonna try to consolidate this. I think some of you were probably part of the action that led to the purchase of our current unit. Try to kinda put on your future budget caps here, because as Roxanna alluded to in terms of purchasing capital, lag, or lead times are extremely long right now. So this would be budgeted in the upcoming budget, but something that if we expect to get it anytime soon, we need to act on potentially tonight. It's about a two-year lead time on these units right now, and it's certainly one that we don't wanna be caught without, especially for any extended period of time. Our current unit is a twenty nineteen, kind of envision this as the fire truck for the Public Works Department. There's only one of these, we don't have a backup. We have small pumps and things, but this is the one kinda do-it-all sewer machine. It can do proactive maintenance as well as reactive in the event of any kinda backups throughout town. We did purchase it in twenty nineteen, three hundred and fifty-three thousand. We did a lea, kind of a lease purchase, capital purchase. We financed it for two point seven eight percent rates, were very, very attractive at that time, so Council made the direction to go down that path. We do have our last payment, August twenty-seventh of this year, and we did elect to enter into the mile after mile program with that unit, and we're recommending that with the upcoming unit as well. That's where all service, both PMs and any kinda repairs are covered for that five-year period. If the truck has to go away and into service, they'll provide us a loaner, again, this is a truck that we try never to be without. Unfortunately, you can see that unit price has gone from three fifty-three to four forty, so they're up about twenty-five percent in that five-year period. And that's something we're, we're working very diligently to absorb and be creative across the city with every piece of equipment we buy. The current unit did have a guaranteed buyback of a hundred and thirty-five thousand toward that three fifty-three. The unit we're proposing, which is identic, generally identical, just a newer model, has a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar guaranteed buyback on the price tag of the four forty. The mile after mile program, there's some bullet points on it and kinda how it helps support our operation and streamline and flatline the cost of running the truck. I presented kinda two options there. Option one would be what I'm calling the trade-in, which is exercising that option for the guaranteed buyback on the cost of the new unit or proposed unit at four forty. You see there that the proceeds guaranteed by Kenlok Equipment would be one thirty-five, taking the net cost to three oh five. We feel very strongly that we can do better on the private market via an entity like GovDeals or another government surplus auction. Again, with the two-year lead times that we're seeing on these, this type of equipment, similar to the ambulance that we acted on about six months ago, we actually bought a new ambulance for less than we did retrofitting and upgrading an ambulance that we already had in service. Again, a lot of that cost increase is driven by the lead times. It's an excellent unit in the fact that it doesn't require a CDL as well, so it's a pretty desirable model because it's a single axle and doesn't have air brakes. We're estimating that on the private or open market, we could probably get about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the truck, bringing the total cost down to two sixty-five. With the current interest and rate market, we would probably recommend as part of the next year budget, just paying cash for this. If, if things change, we could look at a lease purchase option as well.
So do we have to choose one or two to that?
You don't have to choose one or two tonight, it would be a little helpful potentially. What we would likely do is take delivery of option two, we don't, we don't need the direction tonight, just to be clear. But we would likely wanna do what we did with the ambulance, take delivery of the new unit and then list for sale the existing unit. So we would see a little lag in the revenue side of the sale, but again, I, I think it would be well worth the wait.
So the guaranteed buyback on the previous slide is not mandatory that we exercise?
No, it's not, and that's kinda the beauty of the program. It's not mandatory, however, once we get past that date of, excuse me, the, basically August of this year, you know, that buyback goes away. So if the market totally changed or our truck wasn't desirable for some reason, I mean, there is risk in, in chasing the reward.
Sure.
James, is there a cost for the mile after mile program? I'm trying to.
Yeah, it's, it's around actually fifty thousand dollars in, in total for the mile after mile.
So that cost of four forty, does it include that program?
It does, yes.
Okay, okay.
About a five, yes, ten grand a year.
So when do we take delivery of it?
We would take delivery of this in October, so the first year of the upcoming fiscal year, first month, excuse me. Yeah. I asked him, you know, if we were to forego acting tonight, what does it look like if we placed then order, you know, like next month? Because we basically have an allocation right now, that they have a chassis and a bin number and everything that they're ready to, you know.
Put our name on it.
Yeah, put our name on. If we forego that opportunity, he said it's last quarter twenty twenty-five right now, if we wait till October, we're gonna be easily into probably the end of twenty twenty-six. So again, we like to get the most life out of our equipment, but this is one that we don't wanna be without.
And just so I'm clear, I mean, this, the current vehicle that we have isn't in disrepair, it's not.
That's correct.
It's not in shambles or anything like that.
It's not, Randall, I mean, you could probably speak to that. I think a lot of that's probably due to the mile after mile program because they, they wanna do all those PMs for you and take really good care of it, because they wanna buy it back and sell it on the open market for another good chunk of profit.
So they're turning it over.
Yeah, I think the fear would be if we go, you know, six or seven or eight years with it and then want one. If things don't change, we could be looking at ten years, and I think we did keep our last one for around fifteen years. Of course, it was worth virtually nothing when we went to sell it, so you're kinda balancing that as well.
Oh, and the mile after mile expiration expires this year?
It does, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah. It's a five-year program on the existing unit, and it'll be five years on the new unit as well.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take action on the purchase of a Vector combination sewer jet and vacuum truck.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, any discussion, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. So we're down to sixteen, open forum for Mayor and Council.
I knew Randall'd have a truck in there somewhere.
I've got one comment, man. I'd like to congratulate our city manager on being named Jacksonville Citizen of the Year. Well deserved, I think.
Yeah, but it was very deserved, no question. Anybody else? All right. City managers report?
Yeah, just a couple items, Mayor.
When have we?
That's coming up.
Okay.
Save the best for last, right?
Okay.
I hope, I don't know.
I've seen pictures of him.
Yeah. So we were pleased that in late January, sometime after our January City Council meeting, we did officially receive word from Austin and TPWD out of one of their meetings down there that we were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar matching small communities grant for improvements at Lincoln Park. We're still in the infancy of receiving that grant, it's guaranteed that we're receiving it, but we're working through our grant liaison, who's a TPWD staff member, to kinda just work through the intricacies of what exact improvements are gonna look like in bidding, procurement, timelines, construction. I'll just say to kinda temper expectations that the Buckner Park Playground Grant took about two years from award to construction and finalization. I'm hopeful that we can move a little bit quicker. Playgrounds have pretty long lead times and some other items, maybe less. Wanna let everybody know that the great Jacksonville cleanup, again, thanks to our staff for getting this partially grant funded through solid waste grant from the East Texas Council of Governments, but that'll be on Saturday, April thirteenth. It'll center on the John Alexander Gym parking lot. However, there'll be events kinda throughout the community to help address litter as well, but it's a fantastic opportunity to get rid of some household, I guess you could call it hazardous waste, such as motor oil and things like that, that are typically harder to get rid of. That is for Jacksonville citizens with a water bill. We have our grand opening of the Jackson next week, February twentieth. We invite everybody to join us, four PM will be the ribbon cutting, there'll just be a very, very few brief comments at the beginning, followed by about an hour and forty-five minutes of people just come and go, see the facility, see what our hotel occupancy tax is funding for both the benefit of our citizens, our visitors, our hotels. It's just kinda the gift that keeps on giving, so. That's been an extensive renovation process. If you were in the building, wanted, you know, ten or fifteen years ago and operated more as a clubhouse and restaurant, I think you'll be surprised, I don't wanna say pleasantly surprised, but I think you'll be very, very pleasantly surprised with the renovation. And then lastly, last but not least, Devin is in the back, Devin, would you mind standing up? Devin joined us about two weeks ago, he's our new Parks and Rec Director, so we had an appointment to that board tonight. You know, they haven't really been meeting super regularly, and we're looking forward to getting them back on track. Devin joins us from the city of Casterville. He's got about twelve years of experience specific to Parks and Recreation, programming and planning and operations and capital projects and master plans. He's been to three cities prior to coming here to Jacksonville and plans to move to this area with his wife and two kids. So thank you so much, Devin.
Thank you, glad to have you.
Yeah. That's, that's all I got.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any closing joke, Mike? If not, we'll stand the jury at seven oh five. You didn't get much.